Committee, will the secretary please call the roll?
Alderman Lazaro.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Next is approval of the minutes of meeting August 28th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
It's a move.
Second? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is report and recommendation, public hearing fee schedules. Ms. Hennigan.
Thank you very much. Staff is recommending that the committee recommend approval of the attached public hearing fee schedule. Since 2006, the city has been collecting $555. No adjustments have been made since that time for public hearing applications, and as a result, these fees have failed to keep up with the rate of inflation. Also, with the adoption of the UDO in 2010, the section that laid out the fee schedule was not included in that. So, we do need to put fees in the city code somewhere to ensure that we are collecting the proper amounts and have basis for doing so. There is a significant amount of staff time that is put into every public hearing application, as detailed in the memo. It can be dozens of hours for more complicated cases. And since all of this work is done for the benefit of a single property owner or developer, we feel it's equitable for that person to cover the bulk of the costs associated with that work, rather than having all of Wooddale taxpayers pay for that money, or pay for that application. We looked at surrounding communities, and our current fees are generally lower than those of our neighbors for commercial and industrial applications, and a bit higher for single-family applications. This fee schedule that we've put together accomplishes a number of goals. First off, it accounts for the new terminology that's part of the UDO, accommodates for inflation, addresses the amount of resources that the city is using for public hearings, bringing us in line with neighboring communities, and giving a discount for single-family residences.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
What was the, what was the area, the towns that he asked for, and what were the third fees? I did not see that in there.
Yeah, we didn't, we did not include the chart. It was a few pages long because we looked at Itasca, Bensonville, Addison, Outgrow Village, and then we also looked at the communities surrounding those. So, there were a number we looked at, and every community does it differently. Some do it based on what zoning district a property is in, some do it based on the size of the property, per acre thing, and some do it based on the exact type of relief that's being requested. So, it's very difficult to compare apples to apples with that. But what we had done in order to determine how we compare is we looked at a few previous cases and saw how those would have been charged in other cities. And in the summary here, as I noted, for commercial industrial, we tended to be significantly lower.
Sure, go ahead.
The other question I have is this major site plan review. I noticed the, if I'm reading this right, it goes from $555 down to $300. I'll follow up on that, and does that mean if we send a plan out to, to someone else because the project could be too big for us to do, and we don't have the knowledge of some high-tech stuff on this, is that money going to cover that, or is there a separate money that they put off for outsourced engineering?
I'm glad you asked that, because this amendment would take into account money that we would need to do for if we outsource a traffic study, or engineering reviews, a landscape plan review, anything where we'd have an outside consultant. This would allow us to bill them back for that. And getting back to your initial question with the major site plan review, that is a case where we have an approved public hearing, and someone is changing the plan, not to the degree that it needs to go back through the public hearing process, but still needs CDC review. An example of that would be with the memory care facility. They had one thing approved, they made some tweaks to the way the building was designed, and that needed to go back to CDC, but we didn't have to publish the notice in the newspaper and go through that. So, that's why it's a little less.
Thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley.
When you're saying "single family" here, is this, I'm coming in for a variance to build my house, or is this for a builder, or both?
The idea would be for either.
Well, I don't, I particularly don't, I look at single-family homes, and a builder is in business to make money just as much as a developer of another, for a shopping center or anything. So, we're giving a break to the builder. I like to see that changed. If it's a builder, charge the builder a normal fee as, as like a, and a developer. And if it's a single fam, if a person's coming and applying for it, then it's, it's a different story. A business is a business.
I would think that would be a very easy change to make, where, as currently we're saying for one single-family lot, just changing that for an existing single-family residence. That would take care of that.
I guess it would.
What do we?
Single family.
What are we changing? Let me get that clarified first. So, which one are we changing, and what are we changing it to?
In the public hearing fee schedule, wherever it says "for one single-family lot", changing that to "for one existing single-family residence".
So, developer would pay a different fee?
So, if a developer were coming in and building a new home, they would then pay the all-other rates. So, for, you know, if say if someone wanted to build an addition to their house, and they needed a setback variation, that would be $300. If a developer were knocking down that house and building a new one that didn't conform to setbacks, he would pay $650.
Exactly.
So, but, let me just make a comment. So, that, I mean, when we looked at the other communities, their fees are lower. I mean, is that really what, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that that builder's in business, but all he's doing is charging the guy that's going to buy the house in the community, right? So, I mean, we know we're not punishing the builder. It's the person, the end user, that's going to pay all the fees anyway. And if a guy's going to come in and knock down a house, and take it from $150,000 house to a $500,000 house, I think that the, the community reaps a greater benefit by enticing people to do that, is my opinion. Peter Jacob.
I had a question on two of the fees here. For annexation, we're saying for one single-family lot, it's zero. For a variation, a one-single lot, $300. I, I don't necessarily agree with that. And we're going to give, someone annexing their house into the city of Wooddale is going to pay nothing, and a resident of Wooddale has to pay $300 to do a variation on his lot. I would think at, at the very least, we should be charging $300 for the annexation as well.
Ms. Hennigan.
Just to explain why I had suggested that. With annexations, you're encouraging people to come into the city. When someone does annex into the city, chances are there are other fees they're going to be paying. They might be connecting to city water and to city sewer. Those can add up. So, this is really just a way to make sure that just coming into the city by itself isn't going to have a negative impact on them. That way we can sort of clean up some of those random properties that are throughout town that aren't Wooddale, but are still getting the benefit of our police services and other services.
Alderman Jacob.
I guess a follow-up to that would be, I mean, as far as in the last year, how many annexations were there, and did anyone complain about the $500 per acre?
We had two annexations within the last year. And there weren't any complaints, but then we didn't ask them either.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
To go after Alderman Jacob, there's Ward 4 has quite a few annexed that could be annexed and have asked to. There's quite a bit of property in Ward 4 that is all unincorporated.
Mayor, please.
Once they annex in, it becomes, what is it, 6% of the tax bill comes to the city. So, that's going to be their fee right off the bat.
I mean, going back to Ms. Hennigan's statement that we're trying to, for many years, prior to me even being on the council, we've tried to get everybody to annex in. It doesn't make sense. We've inadvertently, over time, lost chunks of land because we haven't been proactive in annexing people in. So, anything we could do for the initial cost to come into the city, which then just benefits the city, we're already giving the services and everything as a plus. I mean, it far outweighs the possible 500 bucks that we're going to, one-time $500 fee that we would get. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Again, I, I look at it, what you were saying earlier about enhancing the, the community of residents coming in. Again, I look at it as a developer building a house, and I understand the cost will go to the, the residents buying the house. Also, a developer that's building a building, at the cost of the city, we're getting more from that on property taxes in a house. I'm not saying I'm not against building houses and stuff, but a business is a business, and a developer is a business. And if the cost goes to the, to the resident, so be it. I'd like to make a motion on the fees that you were talking about, Ms. Hennigan, which were, with the changes. What were those fees again?
Changing the suggested public hearing fee schedule to address existing single-family residences, and then all others.
The fees? I'll make that on a motion.
So, which, which one are we changing, from what to what?
In the, in the schedule where it says "for one single-family lot", changing that language to "one existing single-family residence". So, that would apply to annexations and variations and rezonings.
See where it goes.
Do we have a second?
Might fail right here, which it probably will.
Mayor, please. Got a question?
You know, let's say you want to add on to your house, you're an existing single-family home, but you know what? You decide, "I want to tear down my house and build a bigger one". Do you qualify as a exist, existing family? Because you're going to move in with your brother for a couple of months while they build. Well, maybe your mother, not your brother, okay? What qualifies the builder versus the, you know, I, I buy a house, I come into town, I like the area, I buy a single-family home, so naturally, I'm going to hire a builder and knock it down and put it. Is that an existing single-family home? The definition? That's, I think we're comp, overcomplicating it.
Right. That's what's going to happen. I'll make a motion to, to approve the fee schedule as, as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Want to do a roll call? Do we have some more questions? Alderman Jacob.
Going back to Alderman Sizmarsky, I realize that there's a lot of unincorporated, and we'd like to annex all of them in, but I, I don't see any of them coming here to be annexed in. And about three years ago, I sat here in the audience, and the city, the, the council at that time wanted to annex a bunch of people in, and all those, none of those people wanted to be annexed. I mean, they all said they didn't want it, and the city council said, "That's fine, we're not going to annex you". And I, I just don't think it's fair for a homeowner that's been here for 20 years, is going to, needs a variation, he's got to pay $300, and somebody, not even a resident, never paid taxes in the city of Wooddale before, now they, now they come in for free. It's just, to me, it's not fair to the resident that's been here 20 years.
No, no, wait.
Mayor, please.
They come in for free, but if they need a variation, they're going to pay. It's not that they get the variation for free. You know, the annexation is free, but the variation is, am I correct?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'll, I'll let you go.
All right, thank you. Can we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
No.
Alderman Winger.
Abstain.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Abstain.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
That passes. Next, we have report and recommendation, case number 14-V-11, 935 North Central Weigl Tool Works parking lot variations. Ms. Hennigan.
Thank you. At last week's Community Development Commission meeting, the CDC recommended approval of the requested variations. These are associated with the Weigl Tool Works. They're not proposing any new construction, but the tollway is taking a sliver of land along their north parking lots. This is creating some nonconformities with regard to the parking lot setback and landscaping. So, they have requested relief to make sure that their property is conforming to code. Steph believe that this met the standards for variations. It's a unique condition, and the actions are not Weigl Tool Works' own, and we don't believe it violates the intent of the overlay district.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Weigl Tools, this hardship was brought on from the tollway?
Correct.
Did they pay a fee?
Ms. Hennigan.
For the public hearing?
Sure.
Yes.
You know, I have a problem with when the tollway is taking a property here, and there's a hardship for, for the business owner here, and I'm looking to...
I think the tollway paid the fee.
The tow, huh? The tow?
I'm sure the tollway paid the fee for the...
Well, we don't know that. Was it, was it in their contract for, for the tollway?
The tollway purchased the property inclusive of all the fees and...
Hang on. They paid the fee. Weigl Tools. Was it in the, could you come up here, please? Hang on. Do you mind?
Not at all. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Meg George. I'm the attorney for Weigl Tool Works. Weigl Tool Works...
Could you repeat that?
Sorry. Meg George. Yes, Weigl Tool Works paid the fee. However, through the condemnation case, because they're acquiring the site through condemnation, we will be repaid for all the costs of the case. You know, that is...
So, in the negotiation of the, with the tollway, your fees are being reimbursed totally?
Yes.
For this hearing and everything else?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that
Sure.
there's no cost to you for the hardship to your client for the tollway?
No, we...
And, and you're getting reimbursed?
Yes, we're being reimbursed for that, and then for any other hardship that would occur as a part of this taking.
Otherwise, I would be looking the city to reimburse you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions, Mr. Wesley?
No, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next items to be considered at future meetings, facade guidelines, October 23rd, and the ornamental sign purchase program, October 23rd. Is there anything that you'd like to add? Alderman Roy Wesley.
When they have public hearings, if they fail at the CDC and the council, they cannot come back for a year, correct?
That is correct.
Is that an ordinance, or the, what's it under?
That is in the, as part of the UDO, unless they have substantially different information that they're presenting. And that's only if something fails at the council level.
Okay. When we, when we, when we have a year there, is two construction seasons, really. Could we put on there to talk about, maybe in November, about changing that to six months instead of a year?
What do you, what do you, what are you trying to change from a year to?
I'm trying to change if it fails.
If what fails?
A hearing, a public hearing, a variance or...
Any public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Shorten it from one year to six months. The reason is you're missing two construction seasons when you have a year, versus if you have a six months, you would miss one construction season.
We could look at that in November. We'll check into that. Anything else? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Just a follow-up. Will that facade guideline be ready by October 23rd? Because it was supposed to be ready September. Are we close to that? Last meeting we had, the last minute says September. So, now we're pushing it back to October.
But we've had a lot of canceled meetings and some conflicts with getting it done, but it, it will be ready. I don't want to speak, but maybe Jennifer can confirm that we will.
Yes, provided we have our October streetscape meeting as scheduled, it will be ready.
Okay. And a follow-up, I also, that's fine. The other thing is, could we look at, I don't know if it falls on your committee or where it falls. We talked about the Veterans Park there that we were going to redesign. Since we're spending that money on a treatment plant, we were going to do some landscaping or come up with a different design for Veterans Park. We need to try to get that in line when we may design it, or send it out to redo the landscaping out there and tie it into the treatment plant landscaper, because they're really moving on a treatment plant. So, is, is the streetscape, I'd like to know, is streetscape taking it on, or do we have to bring that, go out for bid for that?
We were taking it on. And like we discussed before, I don't think we really, until they get the, the other walls up, and we can see what we're presented with in real time and space, can't effectively do too much to redesign that. So, probably would get taken up in the spring with streetscape, because some of it we were going to do. Remember, if we're going to
Right.
mount the military emblems, Marine Corps, Army and that, on the brick wall. There was a lot of other things and ideas that were brought to the table. So, we were thinking about bringing that up in the spring, at streetscape, early spring, you know, February, March. I would think, given the timeframe, even though I know they're moving pretty quick at the treatment plant, given the timeframe, they're still going to be there, you know, somewhere in the spring, summer. We should be okay.
I just want to get it up twice.
Right. No, I hear you. Thank you. Anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
I'd like to call Public Works Committee to order. Roll call taken. Note, the same people are here. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for September 11, 2014. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, additional screen walls at the north wastewater treatment plant in amount not to exceed $117,034. That is my motion. Second, Mike.
What do you need more additional screen walls for? I mean, you don't have enough there now, or?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, thank you, Alderman. This project is to, a little while ago, we brought forward some screen walls to, to the committee and the council, and that was to do, deal with the screen walls over by Building 100. And at that time, I said I didn't want to talk about the building between Building 50 and Administration, and then post the east side all the way to the edge of corner. Well, that's what we're talking about tonight, between Building 50 and Administration, and east corner of the existing string wall, where the chain link fence now sits, all the way to the corner, including the gate.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Eugene.
That's a chain link fence. Are we looking, that's regular chain length? We aren't looking at rubber coating gate, something more attractive, or, or, it's concrete, isn't it?
Matt?
The gate, the fence will be the screen wall, just like
There's brick.
the brick masonry.
But the gate's also in there.
The gate will be exactly the same as the gate that's going to be over by Building 100, which I believe is a wrought iron type gate. Not a cha, not a chain length, disorder.
I thought it was in here as a chain.
There's, there's nothing in this statement about the, about that.
Any more, right?
You just brought up two questions here, wrought iron. What maintenance would be on that after we're done?
Maintenance, you said?
Yeah, painting.
On the?
On the gate. Wrought iron rust and stuff, don't, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it would be whatever normal maintenance would be on a gate. I mean, I don't have an exact number for it. It's not a yearly cost of maintenance.
Okay, one more question. Could I get an update on where we are on the sewer treatment plant, for dollar for dollar? What we started, what the total price of the sewer treatment is, the proposal, and where we are?
Jeff, if you want to share that, go ahead.
Yeah, Alderman Wesley had brought this up a month before, and I thought we were waiting until a little bit further along this winter, as the project progresses, and then also kind of in conjunction with some water rate, sewer rate discussions. So, that's what I thought, we were going to get you that number.
Well, that's fine.
Okay, right. I'd, I'd actually like to stay on the, on the wall.
Well, that would make a difference on how my vote is, of where we are.
But I don't think he has...
He doesn't have it, which is fine. I'd like to vote on this, but
Right.
I don't want to see if we're close to $30 million, or whatever the project is. So, I don't, I'm not going to vote for more if there's overruns.
Go ahead, Matt.
And currently where it states, and I don't have dollar-for-dollar figures for you, but currently where we state it, is that this $117,000 is above and beyond the, the amount, but it's within the contingencies amount of the loan. So, it is, that's why it's a change order and not a work directive. That's why it has to be brought to, to the board. So, this is a, this is an increase to the amount of the contract for $117,034. So, whereas there may be some money at the end that it ultimately isn't $117,000 over bud, over the, the original budget number. There may be some money that, you know, comes and goes, as, as it does in this type of $30 million or $20 million project. But that's why it's coming forward today, because it is an actual change order to, to the, to the contract, or additional 117.
Hi, Eugene.
This is a chain length gate, chain. So, I know we talked about up here and not making a chain length that looks like garbage up there. I mean, the woman brought the point we're spending a ton of money up there. I mean, in the next month, I'm going to come back and say, "Now, we don't like a chain length. Once it's up there, now we're going to redo this gate". So, I don't see the other options of any other gates. I've just seen chain length.
Matt, didn't you say it was an iron gate?
Well, I apologize. It's, it's the same gate that we approved in the original function over by Building 100. It's going to be the same gate. So, it, it says in here, "Replace with masonry walls and a decorative gate to match the front gate".
But then, on the way down there, it says, "A masonry of $64,000 and a fence and a gate".
Well, it says deduct.
Yeah, deduct chain length, add decorative gate for $64,000. So, that's the difference, that's, the additional cost is a $64.95, which is a deduct of the chain length and the add of the decorative gate. So, say the chain length fence was going to cost $3,000, and the decorative gate was going to cost $94.95, they take the $3,000 off. It's an add of six.
Okay, I, I had a first. Did I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Report and recommendation, award engineering services to H.R. Green for improvements to the Elizabeth Court detention basin, in the not-to-exceed amount of $30,620. That's my motion. Do I have a second? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
And that passes. Report and recommendation, insulation of wear and baffles in the existing clarifier at the north wastewater treatment plant in the not-to amount, not-to-exceed amount of $11,657. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please. Did you, Matt, did you say one? Okay, roll call, please. Okay, no questions. Roll call.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes. Report and recommendation, Powder Street Pond. Matt, I'm going to turn that over to you, please.
Thank you, Alderman. This is the Powder Street Pond. This is night three of our discussions on the Powder Street Pond. Before you tonight is the additional cost of either going with a rain garden or the original thought of going with the dry bottom with the underdrain. During the conversations that we had at the last meeting, there were some questions that came about, about what the cost would be to maintain the rain garden. That's in your packet, but it's somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000 a year. And also about the pipes that drain directly into the rain garden. I did talk to the designer on this project. They believe that it will not be an issue just due to the fact that since they're designing it, basically as they rip out everything, they're going to start from scratch, they'll be able to put material around those rain, those drains that will allow the water not to affect the material that's in there. But if we do want to remove and move those discharge pipes, it will be somewhere between $12,000 and $18,000. So at this time, I guess I would ask for direction from the committee on which way they'd like to move on this stormwater basin.
Mayor, go ahead.
Matt, $3,000 to $5,000 a year. So, you know, I've looked at a lot of pictures of rain gardens, trying to figure out, you know, I've talked to engineers. Is this something we should be following, looking at? I know in a couple of communities, they've been doing them. $3,000, $5,000 is maintenance of what? The landscaping that's on top of the rain garden? I mean, it would take our guys $3,000 worth to trim the bushes twice a year?
Go ahead, Matt.
I'll be honest to say that I'm not a rain garden expert.
Right.
And in speaking with Baxton Woodman and their rain garden experts that they have on staff, I asked them for a maintenance cost. They said their annual maintenance cost is somewhere between $25,000 and $5,000 a year, depending on the size of the pond, which I told them about what size it was, and they said, yeah, it's about in that range, and depending upon the material that's in there. There's going to be times that invasive species are going to get in there, they're going to have to go and pull those invasive species out. So, and it may not be that it's our guys going in there and doing it, it may be that it's a contract that we have with a company to come in and do it. All I can say is this is what the engineers' estimates for the maintenance costs are.
Go ahead, Mayor Falk.
Yeah. So if we go with the dry bottom with the underdrains, which is a little different than what we have there right now, and what we have right there right now, I mean, and we had the discussion, I mean, there was no maintenance in that pond. If we go with one of these other ponds and we go back to the no maintenance again, it's we're going to be right back here discussing, I don't know, dry bottom with underdrains, without underdrains, to me, they're all retention ponds, and if we're not going to, it's going to become a mud pit like it was before. So what are we going to do different before we spend this money? I mean, I'm for cleaning that pond up because the second it went in, I knew it was crap. I remember, I don't know, it was about eight years ago, I go, what is that? It's junk.
Go ahead, Matt.
Well, I guess when the maintenance comes involved and with, excuse me, whatever, dry bottom with underdrains, without underdrains, rain garden, I would have to see what the actual designers come up with of what materials they put in there to say how much time it would take for us to get in there and do maintenance. We do maintenance on ponds right now. We have a lot of dry bottom ponds that we mow on a regular basis, that we maintain on a regular basis, that we pick up trash out of on a regular basis. So until the design goes through and we actually see what's going in that pond, I won't be able to give you a good idea of the maintenance. I can tell you that if maintenance needs to take place, we're going to take, we're going to do maintenance on it. We're not going to let it go. So in seven years, we're coming back to the council and having the same explanations of why this pond didn't work.
Go ahead, Roy.
Matt, I think these prices that you have, $3,000 to $5,000 from Baxton Woodman, is for subbing it out and for, the mayor just showed me a picture of a rain garden here. And being in that profession, $3,000 to $5,000 is ridiculous from Baxton Woodman come up with that price. This is a price for subbing it out, not in-house. This city, as far as, as long as I'm up here, public work should be doing this and not looking at subbing out any stuff like this.
Okay. You know what? I'd like to just kind of get a consensus on what the council would like to have this go. Can I, can I get kind of a show of hands on this?
You got more questions?
Tony's got a question. Tony, go ahead.
Matt, we have four designs here. Can we get the maintenance costs in all those four designs, like the wet bottom, the dry bottom?
Go ahead, Matt.
We can. I'm sure that I would be able to get that. Once again, it'll be probably something similar to this. I mean, from, it's going to be an engineering estimate to contract it out.
We can't do it in-house?
I'm not saying that we can't do it in-house, but not knowing what the ultimate design of the project's going to be, I couldn't tell you if we have the ability to go in and maintain it. If it, if it's grass bottom, if it's grass bottoms and it's got a concrete ribbon down the middle of it and everything's sloped to the concrete ribbon and the water takes it away there, and it's just grass in there, turf grass in there, are we going to be able to maintain it? The answer is yes. But if it has elaborate species, if there's rock in there, if there's things that we just don't have the ability to do or the right types of equipment to get in there and maintain that, then that may be something that we have to think about contracting out, whether we like to do that or not. Sometimes if you spend a lot of money, you want to make sure you're maintaining it properly, and that's what we'd like to do with this.
You have a follow-up on that?
Go ahead, Tom.
My concern is that we're not just going to have one rain garden in the city, we're going to have, you know, a few of them. We're looking at about four, four rain gardens. So if we look at this cost, so we're looking at big maintenance cost, you know, every year, just to maintain rain gardens.
Mayor?
I don't know, I think we're overcomplicating this. I mean, he's talking about invasive species, native grasses, all this other stuff. I'm looking at ten boxwoods, you know. I mean, a landscape. Jesus Christ, this is about what I got in my house. Sorry.
Go ahead, Matt.
I understand, and I agree with what everybody's saying up there, that, that should we be able to maintain it and should we be able to maintain it for less than $3,000 to $5,000 a year? Probably the answer to both of those questions is yes. I was asked to get a number on what it would cost to maintain a rain garden, and that's what I did. I went to the engineer, they made the design on the project, asked him what a maintenance, annual maintenance cost would be, and this is what they told me. So if we, we're not going to know what the maintenance cost is going to be until we know what the design of the project is going to be. If it has the flowers and the boxwoods, like the mayor said, and looks nice and it's easy, yeah, we can, of course, we can do that. But if it's something that we just can't do, but we need to maintain it properly, then...
Matt, regardless of what, whatever plan that we decide, there's maintenance involved in it anyway. There's costs involved.
There will be maintenance, just, I mean, if there's water in the bottom of these ponds, we're going to have to make sure that we do mosquito control and things like we're doing over at the pond over on Montrose, which costs us money every year to do it. So it's not just the physical man labor of going in there and cutting a branch here or there, taking the trash out of it, it's doing the other things that we need to do to make sure that that pond stays the way that we'd like it to stay.
Pete, go ahead.
A couple of questions for you, Matt. Number one, what is it exactly there now? Does it have, is it a dry bottom right now without underdrains or with underdrains?
I believe it's a, it was designed as a dry bottom without underdrains, but the way that it works right now is not the way that the pond should work. So whatever it is, is what it is, it needs to be something other than what it is.
Go ahead, Pete.
How many, how many times a year do we mow that property?
Matt?
Currently, we can't get in to mow it. There's so much sludge and mud and debris in there that I can't get a piece of equipment in there.
Go ahead.
Well, that's why I'm asking for something to be done here because, like you said, we can't even get in there. It's full of mud. I know the mayor talked about possibly getting some kind of grant money. I don't know if we could get it with this project. Is that still available, Mayor?
Yeah, don't we get grant money for rain gardens?
There's a 25% grant. If you're awarded, if you're awarded the grant, you have to be awarded the grant. I mean, it's not an automatic.
Right. Go ahead, Kristine.
So approximately, how much does it cost us to maintain the other ponds that we do that are traditionally, you know, wet bottom, dry bottom? And I know we do a lot of it in-house, but how many man-hours are we spending? What does that equate to?
Go ahead, Matt.
I mean, it depends on the size of the pond, the size of the dry bottom pond. We'll just take, for example, the one over on Addison Road over off of, by Carter, that one. Probably takes us an hour and a half per person, two people, three hours, weed whackers, mowers, you add up all that stuff, it's probably, I mean, if you do it, figure it out, it's probably $150, $200 with the equipment and all those, if you rate it all out, you do that once a week for, so $200 times 20 weeks, that's $4,000 a year that it would take to maintain that piece of property. That may be high, between $3,000 and $4,000.
That answers my question, and thank you.
Go ahead, Pete.
I guess my thing is, right now, we're not maintaining this thing. This is a city pond. Something has to be done, otherwise we can't expect other people in town to keep up their properties if we can't keep up our own. So we need to do something. So I would say maybe take a tally of what people want here, what, you know, I know before we voted for the dry bottom. That was last September. Everybody voted for that unanimously except for one alderman that wasn't here that time. So all I'm asking is to, let's take some kind of tally or something, figure out what we're going to do here.
Okay. Couple of more questions and we'll do that. Go ahead, Eugene.
Where are we with the grant? Did we put in for the grant yet?
Jeff?
You can't put in for a grant unless it's a rain garden.
Okay.
Well, we haven't decided yet on what we want. So it's kind of hard to, until we decide.
So we don't even know where this project's going to go then? We don't even know if we're going to get the grant.
Well, no.
So, wait, this ain't the first time we talked about rain gardens. You're trying to tell me we couldn't submit an application in on a grant and that we back out the rain garden? We out of it? I just don't understand that.
You can't submit a grant for something that you don't even know what it's going to be.
Right. We have to have the project. We have to vote on it.
Build a clock tower, they will come.
Roy, go ahead. Roy.
I think we need to take action on this tonight so we could submit for the grant. We could pull away, if we don't get the grant, we could pull it away later, correct, Jeff? We got to say, we got to say we're going to do it now, though.
Jeff, go ahead, Jeff.
You're still, you're still paying for the design of rain garden tonight.
Right.
So you can't pull away from the design of the rain garden.
Not the design, I understand that, but to go, let's go, we need to make a...
Okay.
...presentation tonight so we can move forward on designing it.
One more question, please. Go ahead, Art.
My only question is that if we, our concern is that we took into, adequately take into account the other water that's draining into that pond that inadvertently magically got connected to it, which is what, for the most part, created the issues that we're having today. So the dry bottom pond has always been a wet bottom pond because things are draining into it and draining all the time. It isn't just regular rain cycles. So my only concern is spending the extra money doing this and that isn't accounted for. So as long as you tell me we're counting for that, I'm good.
Matt?
Yes. They have told us that during the design process, they will account for that portion of that extra water coming in there and put the proper materials that will allow that water to be moved properly.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Pete.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to approve the design modifications to make this a rain garden.
Second.
Eugene, last question.
I mean, now it's open for discussion. Is the proposal removing those pipes? Because that's in here.
Matt?
Or if we're going to do this right, let's do it the right way then.
Matt, go ahead.
The proposal with Baxton Woodman is to do the design included in that design is the utilization of the water coming from the townhomes. If you would like for the water from the townhomes to be diverted to another location, we can include that part, but that will be a separate contract to have, or that will, that could be part of the ultimate build-out of the pond, but that's going to be an additional cost. The design, they're going to take those holes that are in that wall right now and the water that's being discharged from there, they're going to take that into account during the design of the project, that that water will be coming into the pond. Now, if you guys want those pipes removed, they can also do that.
What if...
It's part of the design portion of the project. So whatever we want in this design, they will design it for the amount not to exceed 16, 17.
Okay. Mayor, go ahead.
When they redo the pond or whatever they're going to do to it, the, basically the building next door, the drainage may be just like any normal house, above ground, and it's going to flow towards that area. It might not be a direct connect anymore, but it's going to be above ground unless you guys choose to switch it and send it all the way to the east. And I think that was, we had received an estimate about a year ago, about $40,000 or $50,000.
But wasn't that, wasn't that pond design because of that area, such as the townhomes? I mean, I think that was the purpose of it.
No, this pond was put in before those townhomes. The pond to the east was for those townhomes and the new homes.
Okay.
That pond was put in to fix up over at Ashen Central, no, wait, not Ashen Central. Ashen Potter used to flood quite often and the street used to, like...
Right. But even if we take those direct pipes, that water, if it goes somewhere else, it's really going to go back into that pond anyway. I mean, eventually, it goes back in there.
Ultimately, that's where it should discharge.
So it's either it's, it has it now or has it later? Go ahead, Roy.
Does it come out of hotel tax, or utility tax? General fund, what?
Go ahead, Jeff.
It's coming out of the, it's budgeted project and the CIP from utility tax and non-home loan sales tax.
Why can't this come out of hotel tax?
I don't know many people going to, I, I have no comment. It's not budgeted for out of that. You already decided to take out utility tax and non-home loan sales tax.
Okay, can we do a, a roll call, please?
I don't understand why it can't come out of hotel tax.
How long is it gonna take them to remove that pipe from that business that's connected?
What, what, what's he talking about?
There's a business that's discharging right into that property right now.
Well, that's what we've been talking about.
No, those are the townhouses. I'm talking about a separate business-
Matt, who's, uh-
-that we're allowed to do.
Who else is charging it?
Uh, there's a, a company to the west that discharges into that. Um, Community Development has been in consultation with them as lo, as well as us when we were out there. Um, and he is more than, um, um, more than willing to remove his pipes and put them, um, someplace different than a direct discharge to, uh, to that pond. So, the, really, the, the discharges are in question are the ones from the townhomes.
Okay.
So, my question still, when are they gonna get the notice to remove that pipe that's illegally dumping into our pond? It's an under, DuPage County Stormwater Order and said you cannot dump rainwater into another taxing body or any other property. It's our stormwater order.
Okay, Matt? Go ahead, Jeff.
No, it's not the first time we discussed it. But the business owner to the west indicated that he'd move his, I believe it's a downspout gutter, been out there. So, I don't really think it's a huge deal for him to move his downspout gutter, so I can make it a priority from the building department to make sure he moves the downspout gutter, and then we should be fine with the business to the west.
But the town, but, but the townhomes in question, and I believe that we've talked about this before, that-
But the townhomes aren't in question anymore, so we're done.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Lozara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Abstain.
Alderman Sizmarski.
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yeah.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
That passes. Report and recommendation approval, partial payment number two to Swallow Construction for the Ward Two Phase One Infraction Project in the not-to-exceed amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-six cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second? Any questions? Roll call, please. Eugene? Matt?
Um, that project is due to be completed, uh, substantial completion, I believe, is the twenty-fourth of October. Final completion is fourteen days after that, the eighth of November. Um, currently, they are, Swallow is about a week or s, week and a half maybe behind schedule. Um, but, uh, we believe they can make that up through the pavement, during the pavement process. We believe that the scheduling of the pavement process was a little bit longer than it needed to be. So, we believe that that should be, that could be tightened up a little bit. So, we're still shooting for the end of October. That's, that's still the, uh, everybody that was at the meeting on a Tuesday with our, you know, Tuesday was, uh, was positive that we can, uh, meet those, uh, dates in the contract.
Go ahead, Eugene.
So, my question is, we're including three lane asphalt, number one, like we did on South Seaver and that, the rain.
Matt?
No, November one, hopefully not. Substantial completion is done by the end of October. Uh, so, the goal is to still get it done within the, uh, contract dates.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lozara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
And that passes. A report and recommendation, approved partial payment number one to Kim Construction for the Manhoe Rehabilitation Project, Area Number One and Two, and the not-to-exceed amount of seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Do I have a second? Questions? Go ahead, Eugene.
Are they done with that project or almost complete?
Go.
Um, they are not completed with that project, um, as of yet. Um, the project, um, was delayed slightly. They, the project end date was, um, supposed to be, I think, the thirtieth of this month. Um, they did ask and for, and were granted a, a small, um, extension of two weeks due to the fact that, um, DuPage County delayed, um, the res, um, giving them their permit. They had applied for their permit, uh, prior to the beginning of construction, and we just received the permit to go on to DuPage County right away. Um, actually, we received that on Tuesday of this week. Um, they did begin working on those extra ones as of this, this morning. Um, so, the goal is to, um, they have to have everything done by the seventh of October, but it's looking more like it's gonna be the first of October. So, we're really close to buttoning up that project.
Tony?
So, we're gonna, so we're gonna pay them completely and, and we're gonna hold anything back?
Matt?
No, this is a partial payment. This is a partial payment for seventy-four thousand. Uh, the total contract is two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lozara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, switch gear purchase October ninth, PRV purchase October ninth, twenty fifteen sidewalk and street engineering RFP award October twenty-third, tree code update October twenty-third. Anything else, Pete?
I'd like to add expanding the LED light program onto that.
Okay. Mike?
What is your twenty fifteen sidewalk, street engineering for what, for where?
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, that was, that's the two, twenty fifteen CIP project listing. I don't have the listing in front of me, but that was what the upcoming streets are in the twenty fifteen. We can get you, we can shoot you out a copy of that or put in the manager's report form if you need to.
Thank you.
Is that like that? Mike?
Good, thank you.
Right.
Do we have a, an update when we're gonna be doing the GPSs?
Matt?
I thought we talked about doing that during the budget time. That's my recollection.
Can we bring it up earlier than that? Can we talk about that earlier than that?
Matt, can we, uh, get information on that earlier?
Uh, when would you like to do that?
You have an idea on, uh, what you're talking about?
December, December, January, is that fine? Or you want it before that?
How much time do you need, Matt, to research this?
Evidently, wasn't Nick working on it with you guys? And, I mean?
Go ahead, uh, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I thought we had this discussion already, and we said that we were pushing that off until the CIP budget planning and then talking about implementing, uh, May one.
Well-
Go ahead, Herb.
If we're gonna talk about a budget planning, is Nick and Matt working on something about a program and this and that to, I mean, when it comes to budget, I'm not, I don't want, I don't wanna wait for seven months into the budget. It, once the budget's passed, in May, when our budget is approved, I want those purchased, if that's the case, if this council decides to go that way.
Okay, so, go ahead, uh-
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I, I have a vibe, obviously, that the council's chomping at the bit to get this program initiated. So, we'll have it ready May one, once you approve it in the budget season.
Roy, what are you asking? Are you, do you want this when? When would you like to see it?
I'd like to talk about it in December, so he knows and get direction to put it in the budget.
Matt, is that enough time for you to get enough information?
Yeah, we can put together some information, but if you, if we wanna do like an informational, more of a discussion where we want this project to go, it's more of a give and take and not so much having information all ready and out there.
And, and that's fine, just so you have direction.
That's fine.
Okay, and that's what we'll do, right?
December, December.
Okay. Go ahead, Kristine.
Well, it, I think we first have to know if, um, a majority are in favor of the, um, of the GPS, correct? So, so like, I don't want you to have to do a lot of work and research and numbers in, until we know conceptually what, whether we all agree or not.
All right, and I think that's what we're gonna try to accomplish in December then. Right? Okay. Yep, we'll do that then.
You're just not gonna go up and do a lot of extensive planning on it, correct?
No, I will come in with nothing.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.